Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's about seven forty. Most of the board just came from executive session discussing pilot negotiations. I just came from a middle school band concert. Where I got to watch my son play two different instruments.
Which ones?
Uh, French horn and valve trombone.
Wow.
Excellent.
That's exciting.
I had to look the latter one up to see what it was. So, we will, I think we're probably going to, I discussed this with you, Chris. I hadn't discussed it with the board, but we're probably going to suspend or, you know, keep open this public hearing. We were gonna form a subcommittee. I've been remiss in forming that. So, I do wanna get that done, but I think it's really not gonna be useful of our time to continue this discussion currently, if everyone's okay with that.
This first one?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, the first one.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
You do need a motion to open the hearing and move it to a date certain.
So move to amend.
So, for a date, I mean, I think we need at least two months.
Yeah, okay. So, you wanna do March, the first meeting in March? So, that'd be March fourteenth?
Yeah, let's do March fourteenth.
Okay.
That'll give us time to have some good discussion among a smaller group.
Sounds good. So, we should need a motion to that effect.
So, I made a motion to amend the discussion until March fourteenth. Do I need a second?
Yeah, can we get a second? Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry that we haven't really gotten farther on that, but hopefully we will. I know this is my bet project, so.
It's a new year.
The new, right, it's a new year, right. And here we go, right. All right, so, resolution number two, considering setting a public hearing amending chapter one sixty-two and chapter two fifty, section four point one of the village code concerning the construction and installation of oil burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel, I think it's supposed to be storage tanks.
Shortage tanks.
Not fuel.
Let me just highlight that, okay.
Seems to be a contradiction in terms.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees desires to regulate the location and installation of fuel, oil burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel storage tanks in the same manner as the village currently regulates permanent standby generators. And whereas proposed local law was introduced in December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to amend the village code concerning construction and the installation of these types of equipment. And whereas on December thirteenth, the Board of Trustees refer the proposed local law to the planning board for report and recommendation. And whereas on December thirteenth, the Board of Trustees also referred to the Westchester County Planning Board pursuant to general municipal law and the Westchester County Administrative Code. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January tenth, that's not correct, January twenty-fourth, at seven thirty P M. on the proposed local law amending chapter one sixty-two and two fifty of the village code concerning the construction and installation of the fuel burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel, oil, fuel storage tanks.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Go move.
Second.
And I think we're all familiar with this because of the past meeting. And again, if you read the backup notes, the planning board did not have a meeting in December, so we're awaiting their comments. And we will, and this should give us time to review the comments and move from there. Chris, do you wanna give a?
No, that's, you really just said that, and you went through that. And we're just looking to have the same types of screening and location restrictions that exist under our code for generators, for this type of equipment. As you said, the planning board canceled their meeting in December. They were unable to meet. So, Michael's gonna make sure that this is on their next agenda and that they know the public hearing set for January twenty, was it January twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
For January twenty-fourth. Yep.
Michael, what exactly is the equipment when it's gas burning? Because I assume it's all pipes.
It's a generator, isn't it? I have propane tanks.
Yeah, it could potentially be the tanks.
I have propane tanks.
Okay, I guess I don't think of that as gas burning so much as liquid.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Anytime you have a fuel burning appliance, whether it's a generator, stove, it could encompass anything from the fuel tank, a propane tank, the piping, the equipment. So, it's basically the entire apparatus or setup.
Okay, I mean, I have gas, and there's nothing external that I know of outside my house.
If people have natural gas.
Yeah, that's what I have.
You would just have the piping from the gas distribution system from Con Ed into your house, a regulator on the house, and off it goes into your building. Other people in the village who do not have Con Edison or a gas supplier, they'll have a propane tank. So, that could either be a freestanding tank on the property. It could be a buried tank underground.
No, that I understand. I just, I don't think of propane and gas burning as being the same, but I guess they are.
So, wait, Michael, so what is the rules now? Because this all sounds like it would be like normal stuff that would just be a stand, like the standard New York State ruling. What do we do now?
I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't enforce this aspect of the code.
Right, right. I was gonna say Steve came out, because I have four propane tanks.
Correct. And there is regulations about how far they gotta be from the house, how they gotta be secured underground, how they have to be secured with dead man, anti-corrosion. There's a whole bunch of things here.
They even needed to be all locked up together in case there's a huge hurricane or flood and they all get blown away somewhere.
Yes, and that's the dead man that I'm talking about. It's the weights that hold them down.
Wow. A dead man.
And we're not talking about the fireplace, like propane tanks.
That could very well be as well, because that's a gas burning appliance. Anything that burns natural gas or liquid propane, such as a stove.
I don't think that people file for those, so.
Yes, do you?
The freestanding ones.
Require permit.
Yeah, and they're usually on concrete pads.
Mine, for mine, so I have four propane tanks outside my house. It has to be on a concrete pad.
Yeah.
It was like a whole huge thing. They were supposed to all be chained up together. And they're huge. They're like.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the little twenty-pound ones.
Yeah, no, these are huge.
No, we're not talking about that.
A lot of barbecue.
Yeah.
That's not good.
That's what I'm. Permit if you're.
We're talking about a two hundred gallon.
Right, that's what I'm like, wait a minute, I didn't know I needed a permit for that.
We're talking about to serve the home, you know, the actual main.
Yeah, we're installing lines.
Propane tanks that are serviced by a supplier, like Action Fuel, who comes with a truck, has to fill it up, not a little twenty-pound propane.
And the other part is that now this local law will also require that it be, you know, kinda co-located with other equipment, screened appropriately, things like that.
I think where we can. I think there has to be, I'm just worried that.
And that's why it's done through the building department rather than through the A R B and everything else. We're trying to make it as straightforward a process, but still have some regulations to say, no, you can't put it right next to your neighbor's house right there. You have to at least screen it or do something, yeah, if there's another location.
I feel like there are already, because I just went through this with Steve.
For the generators, there is for, and they try to, yeah, they try to do, work with the homeowners.
I just had to do propane tanks.
Well, there's a minimum distance from a house now that they could be installed.
Yeah.
Let's say ten feet as an example from the house. So, if you have a side yard that's twenty feet wide, I mean, you're not gonna stick it, I mean, ten feet in the middle of your side yard. So, there's a little discretion here that's gonna go into play.
Yep.
Good. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other?
Thank you, Michael.
Any other questions or comments? Again, this is just setting the public hearing.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three, considering approving stipend for an acting building and fire inspector.
Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the letter dated January third, two thousand and twenty-three from the village administrator to Stephen Fuse, Mr. Fuse shall be designated as acting building inspector and shall be provided a stipend of one thousand dollars per month effective January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. In recognition of the additional responsibilities he'll be undertaking in the building department until such time as a permanent appointment is made to the position of building inspector.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Have a second.
I would first like to just say congratulations to Mickey Izzo on his retirement. It was a very nice luncheon the other day and.
Yep, and twenty years with the village.
Twenty years with the village, and the stories were amazing. And just, not an easy job. And he did it, he did it really well, and we really appreciated all of his service over the years. And I'd like to say congratulations to Steve Hughes for stepping up into that role. And we really look forward to the great things that he can do in the position. He also has a lot of time with the village and in municipal code enforcement before that.
Yep, seventeen years with Rybrook and another seven or eight, I think, in Maric.
So, we're very much looking forward to what he's able to bring to the position. And we know he's gonna do a fantastic job currently as the acting building inspector. Any other comments? All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Congratulations, yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes, congratulations.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes, I've already congratulated him. I refuse to do it again.
I'll show him.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and J P Morgan Chase for credit card services.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to make a change in our current credit card agreement with J P Morgan Chase Bank, and whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to gain additional credit security and reporting, and whereas under the proposed agreement, Rybrook will gain additional features that will allow the village to enhance the village's current security measure to better ensure the financial safety of the village, strengthen the village's purchasing, reporting measures, along with supplemental new features to help streamline the village's credit card systems. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposed agreement with J P Morgan Chase Bank for credit card services. Be further resolved the mayor and administrator authorized to sign any documents necessary for this resolution, and be it further resolved that the approval is subject to changes or modifications as approved by council.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Go move.
Second.
In my mind, all you had to do was say this is recommended by Trish. But I'm sure this is.
Do we currently take credit cards?
Yes.
We do.
We do.
Yeah, especially online and through the.
Yeah, okay.
It gets very complicated too, about who can enter it in, who can't enter it, whether the resident has to do it or we do it, because then who can charge a fee? Who can't charge a fee, all that.
Any questions, comments?
Nope.
I'd agree with you if it was recommended by Trish.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and.
Westchester County.
And Westchester County, if this is.
We'll correct that.
Yeah, Westchester County for community, sort of C B G B grant, sorry.
Community Development Block Grant.
Yeah, C B D, alright, community block grant, funding for the Anthony J Prisillo Senior Center.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to renovate the exterior walkway and boiler at the A J P Community Center, and whereas the Village of Rybrook has applied for community development block grant to help offset the costs associated with these projects. And whereas Westchester County has approved Rybrook's application to award C D B G funding for fifty thousand dollars for the walkway and boiler, with the Village of Rybrook matching this grant required amount for a total estimated cost of one hundred thousand. And whereas the Village of Rybrook must agree to the terms and conditions stipulated by the county to receive the grant funding awarded to the Village of Rybrook. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the agreement with Westchester County for C D B G funding for the A J P Community Center to renovate the exterior walkway and boiler, and now therefore be resolved that the administrator is authorized to sign, the mayor and the administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Move. Second.
We're certainly thankful to Westchester County for providing these grants. This is work that really needs to be done.
This is, and remember, we have a design for the walkway that we talked about at a prior, we reviewed at a prior meeting. So, now that the agreement, which we shared, you know, everything's with the county too. So, now that, once the board approves the agreement and it's signed, then the next step is to go out to bid for the walkway and the boiler, which Mr. Noack will be preparing in the next few weeks. I do highlight there are conditions in the agreement that you guys should be aware of, and particularly, and this is in prior agreements as well, that we agree to comply with the Westchester County, the housing settlement, you know, that we participate for affordable housing and so forth. There's a lot of other regulations that we have to do on the administrative level, like interviews and wages and prevailing wages and Davis Bacon wages, right? Davis Bacon wages, interviews with everybody. It's a very time-consuming, cumbersome process, but it's well worth it for the money that we receive.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Although I must admit that C B D G sounds so much like C B G B.
It does.
Something infinitely more familiar.
I'm thinking that too, David.
Uh-huh.
That's not good.
And we do have another fifty thousand dollar grant for H V A C work that will be coming later in the year. That's also towards another hundred thousand dollar project. And both the boiler, the walkway, and the H V A C equipment is all, our portions of the funding is all included in the budget this year.
Great.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering general fund budget transfers to operating accounts and general fund budget modification to increase police contractual fees and police overtime contractual expense.
Now therefore be resolved the following budget transfers be approved, and there's a series of contingent, of transfers. So, the largest amounts is, I'll go through, there's a transfer of twenty-seven fifty, two thousand seven hundred and fifty, that's for materials and supplies in the board's line. That's for, we've had the retirements, we've had some events, things like that, that are just some supplemental funding. The central garage and fuel is simply a condition of the market right now. There's another sixty-two thousand that we need to get through the end of the year for fuel supplies, otherwise we'll be walking a lot. The fire protection overtime, as you know, we've had, we've had, we've been down one position. That person's coming out of the academy next week, so that's great news. And at that time, that overtime should hopefully get a little bit better, because we have the two-person minimum staffing that we have to fill. The library fee audit, that's for another four thousand dollars. They switched auditors. They're currently using now O'Connor Davies, like the municipalities, you know, a lot of the most of the municipalities are using. So, this is our contractual half share. This is the, the next is to cover stipends for vacancies that we have in those departments, where the staff that are stepping up, that the board's already approved, privately, approved already. And last account is for snow removal, going to highway maintenance and equipment, the amount of twenty-five ninety-eight, that's a smaller transfer needed just for that equipment, for that line. And then the following general fund budget measures be also approved, and that's an increase both on the expenditure and the revenue side in the amount of just over between a hundred and eight and a hundred and nine thousand. That's for police contractual fees for the Con Ed work that's being done. So, in that, we have a revenue offset. So, you're increasing the expenditure to cover the overtime, and you're also increasing the revenues to cover their costs.
Right, because we charge for that.
We charge for that, that amount.
Right, and hopefully we still continue to have a little bit of excess in the snow removal account.
Oh, yeah, let's hope so.
It's certainly been warming up so far.
Yes.
Do you know what a kona hora is?
Are you superstitious and actually believe that though?
So, all right, any questions or comments?
Did we get a motion and a second for that?
Oh, did we? Can I have a motion second, please? You're right, I didn't. Thank you, Greg.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on October eleventh, twenty-two.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
All right.
They were beautiful minutes.
David's in a funny mood tonight.
Pain will do it.
Well, then, Trustee Heiser, you can give special thanks to our secretary, Sherry Malo for that.
I will.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, so I have a few items I wanna touch on. First is that, you know, we're getting a lot of calls right now. We sent out some information, but the new sanitation calendars are available online. So, we did a big push also to those that had some changes in recycling days. I don't think we got really any calls on that. Somebody seemed to be informed about it. So, glad we didn't really, hopefully, surprise anybody on that. But, you know, if you go right to our main section of our, our front page of our website, rybrook.org, headlined on a banner, a banner is a link to the new calendars. So, if anyone wants to print them out or refer to them electronically, there's a quick link right to it. If not, later on in the year, you could always just search for "under sanitation", and it'll come up. Christmas trees are also being picked up. We asked residents to try to get them out by January fifteenth. Hopefully, hopefully, they're all out by then. And we'll continue to pick them up as they go, and hopefully, it won't be June this year when we're picking up our last Christmas trees, right, Michael?
Happen in the past, Jimmy.
The, this Saturday, the Westchester County shredder is coming to Village Hall at nine thirty-eight King Street. So, we're very thrilled that we have the county coming. So, any residents that want, have documents they want to shred, confidential documents, things with personal information, bank statements, anything that you want to have shredded, it's gonna be this Saturday, January fourteenth, at Village Hall between ten A M. and one P M. There is some risk that the truck fills up, they won't be able to continue, but generally, they usually have room to the end, but there's no guarantee there. So, the earlier the better. But we will have staff there to help, help residents put it into the, get, bring it up to the shredder. You can pull right up into the parking lot. I'll pull, you know, they'll be there to tell you, show you where to park. And you could park, usually, they come up right next to it. We'll help put them in. The county does, the rules for what, how you want, need to prepare the documents for the shredder, there's a link in our website, there's a link in the email we sent out. The county would like as little foreign material with the paper as possible. You know, if you can remove paper clips that are easy to take off, if you can remove binders, if there's something that's bound, just taking off the binder part, that's the typical way that you have to get rid of it. If you have it in a box, you're gonna dump it into the box, but, you know, then, then they won't take the box into the shredder. So, you need to take that back and either throw it out, or we may be able to put something outside as well for, for people to have boxes. Any other questions on the shredder?
So, physically, what do they do? They come to Village Hall?
Come to Village Hall, mhm, and we'll be there to help.
Truck that has.
Yep, it's a truck that has a shredder on it. Last one I saw had it on the side. And they basically will take it, well, our staff will also help, we'll have a couple of guys from Public Works here, and they'll help, and they'll put it into the shredder, take back the box, and they might look to make sure you don't have bind, anything bound.
Right.
You know, you can't have bound dogs.
Okay, so I'm gonna post that. Okay, great.
What time will the staff be here to accept things? May I ask, because I have to be some nine thirty.
They'll be here at nine thirty.
Ooh, I might come at nine thirty.
There you go. We don't really want everyone coming at nine thirty, but they'll be there.
I don't need it to have.
You're special.
Knowing who's gonna be here, he's always prepared.
Do the ribbon cutting. You gotta do the ribbon cutting.
Coffee either.
And the county does advertise it on their website as well, and some people look for that. So, just know, it's really open to anybody in the county to come to.
Okay.
Okay. And just on that, on that end, you know, we were, I know it's a little inconvenience for those that may have tried to come to Village Hall yesterday, but we closed down for a major, which we haven't done in many, in several years, for major records retention. We had to, particularly, we all had to pitch in, everybody was helping cleaning out the basements, cleaning out the records from the firehouse. All our old building records are gone. We have between two hundred and fifty and three hundred boxes that were destroyed. For all those boxes that get, that get removed, we have to put disposition schedules on all of them. There's retention schedules depending on the types of documents, documents that are scanned, you know, we can get rid of. So, we also had file cabinets we emptied out and got rid of, and other, so, so, everyone was a little bit more tired today at work, I think, and a little sore. But it was, it was, it always feels good, though, when you get rid of all that material.
It was cathartic. Can they come to my house?
We finished out a dumpster, and we have boxes waiting inside, because the county's gonna do a special trip for our staff, our offices, this Friday. Or if it rains, maybe we're working out some alternative plan. But, yeah, they're gonna come, because we have that much that they have to do a different, a special trip.
They should have burned it.
Big bonfire? There you go.
You should have seen it, though. It was a lot of.
It was a lot.
A lot.
So, yeah, we also, we also, just a little heads up about, this is not in the near future, but Portchester is currently has a series of developments. You may have read about some of that. And as part of that, they're gonna need more water service. So, just, at this point, we'll just talk about the disturbance of the, to get there, to upsize the line, Viola, or formerly Suez, is gonna, has to re-upsize the pipes coming down. They're gonna be going down from all of Lincoln Avenue and Westchester Avenue. So, that's gonna be a lot of disruption, probably for, could be a couple of years it could take to do that in sections. And it's a major upgrade. They leave the old line in place, and they put a new line in the street, and they'll have to restore the street. So, the good part is when it's done, you're gonna get, we'll get new streets. But at the same time, there will be some disruption. Won't, probably won't be till next year, but just realize that's gonna be down on, you know, coming down the pike.
Ah, so to speak.
Huh? Yes. Yeah, the turnpike, the park, the parkway, how about that, from the parkway? So, that's coming down, and, yeah, and, and the other benefit is we will get increased pressure throughout the village too, is what we were told. So, that's the other good piece of it as well. And there's nothing that's gonna impact rates, which we've asked them to put in writing.
Yes.
Yes. Okay? Because they already do a capital plan, so they're just readjusting the capital plan to do this work that was maybe scheduled a few years down the line. So, instead of other work, they always have.
They're large territories, so they're doing, they do capital.
They'll shift another part out, and they'll do, shift this one up.
And the, and the developers bear two-thirds of the cost?
Two-thirds of the cost, yep. And the remaining third is what they allocate for capital projects anyhow, so they're gonna, that's what the shift.
Not on the.
So.
Yeah, it won't be on the additional, it won't be additional rate bears from what we were told. It won't be anything that impacts the rates. So, we said, which they, they said they were putting writing to us.
Great.
And that's all I have for tonight.
That's excellent.
All right, so we do have one discussion item. Sorry, this, so, discussion item, stormwater pipes in the public right-of-way and streets, and I think this has to do with sump pumps and other.
Yeah, and I'm gonna ask Michael if you don't mind. We'll have a conversation with the three, all of us. Maybe, maybe it'd be good to start a little bit with how we, what we do now, and then express some of the concerns that you want, you wanna talk about to see if we could address it differently.
Sure, sure.
So, I think the major concern is, hm?
Go ahead.
So, the major concern is when there's water in the street, it can create a hazard, particularly in the winter when things ice up. And, you know, there are areas throughout the village where there is pipes that go directly into the street, and we have different procedures which Michael can go through. How do we handle things now in our system, and when do we consider it something that we, we have to do something to, to correct the, to correct the situation? When does it become a situation that needs to be corrected?
Okay, so, within the village, there are a number of residences that have leader drains that go and discharge into the roadways. A lot of those houses are currently grandfathered and allowed to do that, okay? And as part of that, many homeowners also have pipes that go to the road with, which wind up bringing water into the road from sump pumps. So, what happens is the village code was revised a few years ago where the building department can go out and enforce what's called a nuisance code violation for icing in the roadway. And whenever it's reported back to the building department or Public Works, we, we'll go out there, we'll survey the site, and we'll see, is it really a sump pump? Is it really obvious that's a sump pump where every, I don't know, two, three minutes, it's pumping, it's gushing, at which point the building department will get that information, the building department will get that information, and they'll follow up with a notice of violation, or they'll follow up with the homeowner and try to give him a chance to remedy it or cut the pipe back, it depends on the situation and where you are, so we'll try to resolve it upfront amongst ourselves first, if not, then we will issue a notice of violation, and they'll go to court, and then they'll have to resolve it by hiring an engineer and get it done at that point. As a result, you also have, as a result of leader drains, you may have some bleeding out into the roadway, where, under the weather situations that we have now, where it's fifty degrees and drops to twenty overnight, or it stays for five days at twenty degrees overnight, you may get some bleeding or pumping into the roadway of water, and that's a different animal than having a sump pump, and you could tell it's a sump pump by how it acts, how far it goes into the roadway, how it builds, ice overall will expand on the exterior, it builds its way out, so it kind of doesn't matter, I mean, it's almost eye to eye on the two situations, you have to really go there and survey the site and see, is it a sump pump, or is it groundwater, or some other source, but in any event, if there's that kind of a situation, it is a notice of violation through the building department to follow up on.
And there is times that you'll see water in the curb line, and curb, where there are curbs, each, each situation can be somewhat different, because it, by nature, in theory, and theory doesn't always work in practice, but in theory, you know, roads should be crowned, you should have curbs, and the curbs are there to carry the water to the storm drains, basically, that's generally how it should work, where it starts to become a concern is where pipes are going, or situations are going, where the pipes are going into the street, and there's nowhere for the water to go, there's not the right pitch, or there's a pump that's pushing it further into the street, which can cause hazardous conditions for either walkers or pedestrians, or vehicles that are driving on it, and that's some of the balance on a case-by-case you kind of look at, and there's different ways, perfect world, we'd love to see everyone keep all the water on the site, but in some cases, that's not always, always the case.
Exactly, and the one thing I forgot to mention is, on, on the part of the DPW operations, Highway will go out with one truck and we will salt our areas, our hotspots, which we know are recurring, either due to groundwater or some other issues, or areas that pop up with homeowners calling in, so we do respond accordingly with our trucks as well and salt the area.
Michael, I have a question for you, what, what is the situation on Hillendale, is that groundwater coming up, I know you guys tried working there a couple of years ago, and it's still coming out?
Correct.
But you salted, I've seen that.
At the top of Hillendale, that is groundwater, that is bleeding through, and from, in between thirty-nine and forty-one, we actually did a drain line and a curtain drain along the gutter line, heading up into the area of where the water's coming out, we did about hundred and eighty feet, eight years ago, and we actually extended that pipe two years ago across a driveway, which was not fun, homeowner was a little upset, but we tried to resolve this issue, and we put gravel, perforated pipe, blacktop it, where's the water coming out? At the top of driveway, at the joint, you can't make this up, and the driveway is sloped, and instead of coming out at the bottom, it's coming out at the top, and you got eight, twelve inches of gravel and a four-inch perforated pipe, you can't make this up, that's groundwater that's bleeding through.
Right.
And over the cold spell, what, a week or two ago?
Yeah.
You saw on Hillendale?
Yeah.
In the fifty area, water was pumping through Belgian block aprons, that's groundwater that's basically pumping up through capillary action, it's actually being squeezed out of the ground with the freezing and thawing, just finding its way out, icing, and building its way out into the roadway.
Yeah.
And that happens in a number of spots, we have a spot on, on West Ridge, we did ten yards of gravel across the whole width of the road, same thing, twenty-foot wide patch, eight-inch pipe, the pipe is running, where's the water come out? At the joint, in between the two pavements, because it's finding its way in between the gravel.
Because we want to try to get to them every weekend, because obviously if it turns icy, then our crews have to keep coming out and hitting it with salt, and that becomes a problem as well.
We have a spot on Lorge as well, which we're monitoring, and we're trying to come up with a fix, there are some places where fixes are easy, you have a basin, and you could add a drain, and you could do it, there's no guarantee when you do a trench drain that the water's gonna get into there, as you see on Hillendale, two hundred feet of perforated pipe at the edge of the curb with blacktop there, it's finding its way in there, but not all of it, and we extended it, and still to no avail, you know, it still comes out right there, you know, you try to battle it as much as you can, but that's to no one's fault. There are other situations where you have a sump pump that pumps out into the roadway, and you could tell, because at the pump, at the pipe, it's, I don't know, maybe eight inches thick of ice, and then it moves down.
And every so often you see a little push of water.
Right. Did you see that somewhere, Susan?
Yes, I did.
Where?
Little enough to say, but it's, you know, and I would say that if, you know, if residents see something that they're concerned about, they can always call Village Hall and let us know, and the building department, the building department will follow up with it, and DPW will follow up with it, and, and if it's something that's, goes against code, we do have the remedies within our hood.
And Trustee Epstein, do you, what is, what was your experience, I know you brought this on the...
My experience was during the last freeze over, during the last freeze over, I walked the neighborhood all the time, and I saw several occurrences where it was blug, blug, blug with the water, so, and then the entire street was covered with inches of water, and so I think that it was definitely an issue, so what should a homeowner do in that case, or what should somebody who's walking do, should they report it, what do they do?
So anybody in that case should either call Public Works, Engineer, or Administration, and inform us of an icy situation, or possibly a water issue at an address, we do need an address, because it's a little hard to say it's on Rock Ridge, okay, but we need a little more specific address or two, when people call, it is anonymous, we ask your name for information purposes, so we can maybe follow up with you if we need more information, but we do not relay that to anybody who...
We don't, but it is public if somebody asks for a foil for our records, but, yeah.
Under freedom of information, though, it must go through Administration, and Mr. Bradbury has to approve it, but, but upfront in conversation, it is not released until we are told to release that information.
Right, no, I'm...
It's confidential up to that point, but people will go out and will follow up, but we encourage people to call us, because we don't see everything every day.
Right, no, no, my concern is that I definitely thought that it was a huge hazard, because there was no way to avoid the amount of ice in the street.
If you see, if you see it beyond, you know, a couple of feet on the curb line, there's potentially a problem that needs to be addressed, for sure.
Exactly.
Well, on a sump pump, remember, every ten minutes, fifteen minutes, five, eight gallons, five, eight gallons...
See a push.
Eight, ten, twenty, thirty, forty gallons in an hour, it starts building quick at twenty degrees.
Especially if it's not going and staying on the curb line, it's not hitting the drain, yeah, you just, it's just gonna push it across the street.
It starts building and pushing, yeah, but in that case, call Building, Public Works, Administration, information on where it is, what's happening, a phone number, and we'll head out there.
We will follow up.
And we'll follow up, Highway Department will go, as I said, accordingly, if it's an emergency, we'll send Highway out, and we'll salt.
First step is we'll, we'll try to take care of the hazard, and then it goes, goes with the homeowner, they're trying to work something out.
Exactly, that was my concern, safety.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, public that is. Our next, I would, before I get to that actually, I would just also remind residents to please take precaution as much as you can, we have had some more thefts in the village, remember to please lock your cars, bring your key fobs in, and, you know, do whatever you can to protect, to protect your, your property.
We have had extra patrols out.
That's right, we've had extra patrols.
I just want to say something about this. Sorry. As mentioned about keys, okay, I mean, key fob, please don't bring your key fobs into the house and leave them in the garage, or leave them next to the door, any key fob within twenty feet, thirty feet of your car, you can still turn the car on, just be mindful, and people out there do have devices to extend the range of these hand fobs, so they could pick up a signal in the house and turn your car on, even if you leave it by the door, so just, people be mindful, please don't keep it within proximity of your vehicle by the front door, ten, fifteen feet away from your car, just be aware of that.
It's good to know, I do not miss.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is a range where your key fob is able to be picked up by your car, and these do have devices, there's devices out there that could amplify signals.
Interesting, also...
I don't know if I'd...
But you think that way sometimes, if you have to.
I also saw a piece where they said that everybody should disarm their garage clickers that are automatically in the cars, and lock the door in between their garage and their house.
Yes, that is another...
That's a good point too, yeah.
Yeah, do whatever you can.
A lot of people do not, but that's critical.
If your car in the garage.
Yes, even better, if you have one, yes.
Wow, okay, that's good to know.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next meetings of the Board of Trustees, and I think this is a little off, but it's January twenty-fourth, and I believe February fourteenth.
Correct.
So, oh, it's February fourteenth?